Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this North Andover School Committee meeting for June 15, 2017, to order. The first order of business is to give the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite everyone to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Just as a reminder, we're being recorded tonight, and if everyone could please silence their mobile device, that'd be great. Our first order of business is school committee reorganization, and per our policy, I will now pass the gavel to the senior member of the committee, Mr. McDevitt.
Thank you.
Glad you didn't say all this.
No, we won't do that.
Clearly not. All right, so I will now entertain motions for nominations for the office of Chairperson.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I would like to nominate my good friend and colleague, the gentle lady from Main Street, Ms. Amely Mably, to be the next Chairwoman of the North Andover School Committee.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Are there other nominations? All right, so I will do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Tracy, Ms. Picard, Mrs. Mably, and myself, I will vote yes.
Okay.
Five oh.
I will not move.
Oh, wow.
Do I get to vote yes, too?
No.
No, no, no. I'll take my name tag and...
Wow, I have to move my seat.
You have to move your nameplate.
It's a doodle.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm gone. Ow. You never know who's there.
My work is done.
Wow. Well, I'm truly honored, and hopefully I do this correctly, since you'll have to bear with me, but so, thank you. I now then am open to nominations for the Vice Chair. Is that correct?
Madam Chairlady, woman.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Holly Lynch to be the Vice Chair for the North Andover School Committee for the next upcoming year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Tracy nominated, Mr. McDevitt seconded, roll call, are there any other nominations? Okay, Mr. Tracy?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt? Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, that is a five oh vote as well. And now for Clerk.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, sir.
Chairwoman, I'd like to nominate Ms. Helen Picard for the office of Clerk for the North Andover School Committee.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay.
So, that is taken care of. Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
Now, I believe that is time for a public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? Seeing none, we are going to move on to the announcement regarding our North Andover Teachers Association contract.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes.
Again, it is with great pride and thanks and gratitude that I am happy to say that we've come to an agreement with the North Andover Teachers Association on a contract for the next three years. The process has been going on since December, if I recall correctly, six months, but I will honestly say that every hour that we put into this was worth it. The experience for me, I know Mr. McDevitt, I'm sure, will say a couple of words in a second. He's gone through the process before, but this is my first time going through it, and I will say that as long and arduous as it was, it was very helpful and informative for me as a school committee member, getting to know the issues in more detail, but more importantly, getting to know the members of the teachers' bargaining team. And I know, you know, Ryan Landry and Jane Broderick are with us tonight, but their team and Bill Brady, also another co-president of the union, was very, very helpful in getting this done. I just would like to say thanks to Superintendent Price and her team, Mr. Gilligan sat in on it, Donna Straight, Jim Mealy, Kerry Wahlberg, Chet Jackson, Greg Landry. Did I miss anyone else from our side? Very professionally done. I also want to thank and also wish a very happy birthday to our town manager, Andrew Mailer, who was involved in a few of the sessions. And obviously, I want to thank my good friend and colleague, Mr. McDevitt, for his leadership, because he's gone through it before, so it was very, like I said, very, very helpful to have him on board through the whole process and help me out personally with it. So, I know maybe we can invite Ryan and Jane up to say a couple of words about how things went with their vote with the teachers' union, but I know that I'm prepared to vote yes, and I hope the rest of the committee votes yes on this contract tonight.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. Jane and I are both pleased to announce that the teachers voted to approve the contract with a vote of 190 to 12, so almost a 94 percent approval from the teachers. So, we're very happy to announce that and let you know.
They made me very happy because there were some schools where no one voted no. And after, after working on it for such a long time, it's almost like, you must vote yes, we've worked so hard, so I know everybody has a right to vote, but it was very nice when we had an election committee and Denise Coleman from the Franklin School brought over the box with each school laid out, so it was very nice to see. It was long, but it was interesting. We had good discussions, and I really do like this IBB process.
Fantastic.
And I'd like to agree with Mr. Tracy that I felt like the process was a great experience for getting to know the school committee and other peoples with, other people within the bargaining unit, and I thought it, not only do we have the result of the contract, but I feel like our relationship is very good at the end of that, which is always great as well.
And I liked how many teachers were involved on our side that came and sat through the meetings and met outside of, in small groups to bring things back to us, and I think that's what made it so easy for this contract to pass.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I was saying, Mr. McDevitt?
I'll just say a couple of quick words. I mean, I think Mrs. Tracy has already said a number of things. I mean, I think the union leadership was, was great, and the teachers who came as well were fantastic to certainly give of their time, and some, some of the meetings were at the end of the day, and then some went a little bit later than late. But we really had, I think, continued, open, honest conversation about what's going on in our schools and the conditions and the interests of both sides. And I don't think that in a traditional bargaining setting, we would have gotten to where we have gotten today. And, and just for the public who may be watching, a traditional bargaining session is really just, you know, two sets of lawyers trying to hash things out, and we really, we sat in this room around, a round table, very collaborative, you know, coming up with ideas, and I think one of the things, you know, was always that no idea was a bad idea, but, you know, we would put it out there and then we would start some conversations about that. And I do think that you neglected, everybody has neglected, Mr. Chet Jackson, our new high school principal, who is our facilitator, who every time we got off track and tasked, which might have been often, was there to kind of just remind us to go back to the process. So, I really thank him for stepping up for that role as well.
And one last, last point I just want to mention, that obviously, Mr. Mailer was involved, and from a budgetary perspective, he was very happy with the, with the financial aspect of the contract came out, so that was one of our, one of our goals from our perspective, at least.
Dr. Price, what do you make of that?
Yeah, so one of the things that's really tricky for a superintendent is contract negotiations, and everyone has different views on whether a superintendent should be involved or not involved, because at one point, you're trying, you're very concerned about the fiscal reality, but at the same time, your relationship with your teachers is critical to your success as a leader. And so, sometimes, super, contract negotiations can be the downfall of a superintendent. And, you know, I was very anxious about it in my first contract negotiation as a superintendent, and all I can say is that I think our relationship is stronger after it, rather than it being much stronger. And as long as I am a superintendent of schools, I'm going to espouse IBB, because I think that what we were able to do, not only around the financial parts, but around collaborative time for our, our teachers, I think is so important, around departmental curriculum leadership at the high school, which we had lost, we made some significant changes that I think the North Andover Public Schools are going to be better for kids as a result. And, you know, often, this just comes down to the dollars, and we really were able to get through that and also talk about how can we make this place better for kids, which is really why we exist. And I felt so strongly that we came out with a contract that's going to be better for kids and teachers, and I'm just really excited about it, and I, I want to thank you guys for helping me through my first contract, and I want to thank you, too, because something that I was very worried about actually has been one of the highlights of my year.
And I think just for the record, the contract, we posted online pretty quickly. They're all posted online.
Right.
The public, okay, great. So, with that, Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, the contract with the North Andover Teachers Association as it's been presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have to do a roll call vote on this, too, I believe. So, Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very exciting. We all do?
No, you did.
I do?
No, I haven't, sorry.
No, that's fine. Who couldn't have known? Yeah, there's no way to set that up. You have to be clairvoyant. I thought, I thought we all signed it, so.
Sorry.
I get to sign?
No.
You should. All that works.
It's just him.
Yeah, no, I know. Here's the signing pencil.
I had Mr. Tracy as the chair on the contract.
That's okay, as I just dribbled down my shirt.
I know. Yeah, maybe next time it can be more like the diplomas. We'll spend all night signing.
Cover up my spill on my shirt.
Yeah. Just take a, yeah, Mr. Gilligan, take a photo off. Yes. The historian.
I'm going to put the pens out in the bookcase, the shelf.
Right.
Mrs. Broderick, just for the record, this might be more comfortable than my kitchen where we signed the last one.
Oh, really?
And Jane and Ryan, one is for you.
Great.
Outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yay. One is for you. Yep.
And these are yours.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to all the teachers.
Thank you so much. And yours.
You don't need to stay.
Good night. Any other comments on that? Actually, I just say thank you for all the hard work that you all did on both sides, and it's very exciting for us. Now, time to move to the consent agenda. We have some donations to accept. Mr. Gilligan. Mr. Gilligan, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to introduce tonight some folks who really made a difference for us here in North Andover, especially with our early literacy. There are very generous donors last year, and they agreed to do so again this year, and they came in and met with our literacy team. We had quite a conversation of the impact that they're making, but I'd like to have James, Anita, and Anita's mom, Margaret, come on up.
Come on.
Yeah, come on, Margaret's here, I mean.
Thank you.
And Lorene Marks, and Lorene just has a couple of quick words on what it's really meant for not just kids around intervention in the classroom K to two, but for all students.
So, we might have talked a little bit before, but one of our district goals is to have a consistent curriculum, and especially at the elementary levels, we've really been working at that. Dr. Price has found some really creative ways to find funding for that, but we can't do everything at once. And really, last year, the literacy piece was kind of a couple of years out, and then some things changed. We were able to do foundations in kindergarten, because you've got to start at the very beginning, and then you generously donated for first grade, which was very exciting, a little stressful, because we had to get all, a double number of people trained in foundations at that time to have them ready to roll for this year, but the teachers' attitude has been so positive about the whole thing. The kids are enjoying it, and then this year, we looked at second grade, because really, we wanted to do the program K through two, to really, you know, hone in on those young kids and those early literacy skills. We did the training about two weeks ago with our second grade teachers, and they were so excited. The materials came about three days before the training, so we boxed everything up for everyone, and the comments at the training were so positive. We had some of the teachers one day, and then the rest of the teachers another day. And some of the teachers had worked with foundations in the past, and then the district had moved away from that, and they were just so positive and pleased that we were going back to that, shared all kinds of other hints with one another, were very supportive, so it was really, really great, and they're just excited. It's a new manual, so some things have been updated, so to have that in their hands, to have the training, to have the materials to be able to look at over the summer is huge for teachers. So, it really, very much appreciated, so, and I wanted you to know that the teachers are saying those things as well, so.
The most important thing we can do is get kids to be proficient reading by third grade, and as a result of the award of generosity, we were able to move up by two full years the implementation of something that we were going to phase out because of fiscal restraints, and you guys made it possible, and we couldn't be more happy that you're so generous and made this happen for our kids.
Incredibly grateful, thank you. Anybody like to make any comments? Mr. Tracy?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to James and Anita. I've known the both for, for several years, more through their business in Lawrence, and, you know, their generosity, we're sitting here tonight, but I can attest that there's so many nonprofits in Lawrence that have benefited from James and Anita's generosity over the years. We're happy to have you here in North Andover and willing to give this kind of contribution, so my deepest thanks.
Thank you for your kind words. I did want to say a couple of words. You know, I told you in our meeting that we, I was inspired to help, just because I've seen kids who didn't have the advantage of foundations and had to go outside the school district in order to get support, kids who were very bright, just didn't have the reading support, and therefore, didn't have the self-esteem that comes with reading. And I know, you've reiterated back, I don't know anything about education, all I know is that the kids who can read have an incredibly higher self-esteem and can move through life a lot more successfully, and that, to me, is incredibly important. You know, selfishly, North Andover is our home, we want our kids to rise up to the challenge and be successful, but that could easily spread to other school districts, and I think something to be said for the numbers you presented to me and the, our ability, and think, we're in a, we're thankful that we're in a position that we can contribute, but thankfully, we have kids who, in our own family, who are awesome readers. We want to see that kind of success with kids who are across the street and around our community. So, thanks for putting the program together on a rush scale and to make it happen, and it's wonderfully gratifying.
Yes, that's right.
I did see your tweet, I think it was a tweet saying, "Foundation, second grade foundation materials are in," and I was like, "Oh, that's awesome."
It's pretty scary that superintendent's taking pictures of boxes, and as excited as I am about it. Yes, it's, it was wonderful. It was wonderful to be able to have the teachers get the materials now, and, you know, you referenced the numbers. I mean, we are seeing that foundations is making a significant difference in our kids' ability to access so much, and, you know, it's, it's really changing the reading landscape in K and one, and we're so excited we're going to be able to do it in two also. It's, I mean, you saw the numbers.
Yes.
It's worth every nickel, because, you know, getting kids to read by third grade is probably the most important thing we can do as a school system.
And you have a clear plan, they're supposed to talk the foundations in their classroom, and for those students who get reading intervention, they get what we call a double dose, so they're getting that again, and that's where we saw the numbers in terms of ambitious growth for our students, so really, that catching up, getting what they needed. And I know I shared this with you, and I've shared this at the training, but my background is special ed, in particular, learning disabilities, and I used to help districts set up language-based programs for students with significant reading and language disabilities. And those districts that I worked in, that instituted and brought in foundations, we saw a tremendous decrease in the number of referrals for language-based learning disabilities, and that strikes me, because a child could have, was wrongly diagnosed as having a learning disability on the basis of a curriculum, and that's, to me, that's pretty significant, so, so I was thrilled, very excited, and as I said, all the teachers have been, the reading interventionists have been so supportive, so greatly, greatly appreciated. And I'm glad to know it's leveling the playing field for kids, so they don't feel like they are pulled out to do something completely different. I think that's one thing you expressed, is they're just brought up to the same level as the other kids, and they're all following the same curriculum, so that's, that's outstanding. So, you're welcome.
Madam Chairwoman?
I'd just like to, again, say thank you. I mean, I have three children in the district, and two of them have really struggled with reading, and, you know, are now, they've worked really hard, they had some intervention, you know, at Kittredge with some reading specialists to help them kind of get over a little bit of the hurdle and the bump, and I'm so encouraged by the numbers and the results that we're seeing as a result of foundations, in order to help move other kids and help other kids kind of get over that, and I, I just can't thank you enough, this is fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, I would add, too, I have a high school student now who had the benefit of foundations when he was in first, second, third grade at the Thompson School, and he is a straight A student now, and he schedules time for pleasure reading, and I think that's really just a testament, anecdotal as it is, it's really exciting to me.
And for us, it was my daughter's very close friend had to go outside the district for that support, because she was borderline, and there wasn't the support she needed here, but that just told me that we could do it here, and I think I, I sent you an email a year ago, saying, "What can we do to help?" And Greg, you responded saying, "Yes." So, we're glad to be part of it and certainly look forward to future success.
Well, your spirit of collaboration, teamwork, and generosity is greatly appreciated by all of us, but really, by all the students and teachers in the district. Thank you so much.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd, I'd move that we vote to accept the donation of $10,000 from James and Anita, warrant to be used to support the implementation of foundations in the North Andover Public Schools second grade.
Second. Excellent. I have Mr. Tracy with motion, Ms. Picard with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, so five oh vote. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mark.
Marksey.
Marksey.
Look, Ms. Mark.
Yes. So, we have another donation that we'd like to look at accepting this evening, and I think that for people who don't know, the Peter Breen Landscaping and Excavating Company has for many years donated mulch to all of our schools to help with spring cleanups, fall cleanups, and we're interested in thanking them very much for that generosity and supporting all of our PTOs in particular for cleaning up the school grounds in the spring, and would like to hear a nomination to accept the donation.
Ms. Mably, I know a lot was at the Kittredge School last week for the dedication of the new playground out there, and that was just a perfect example of the work that Peter Breen has done. I've known Peter for many years, his family has been, been involved in this town, going back generations, so Peter, he's a very shy guy, he's not here tonight, but when you call him, he'll always deliver, so I can't thank Peter enough, so I'd like to move that we accept the donation to the schools of all the mulch that he's done for the playgrounds from Peter Breen Excavating.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by, I mean, by Mr. Tracy, second by Mr. McDevitt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for that generous, generous donation and continued support of all of our schools. So, my first chair's report, I don't have anything prepared.
You jumped a couple.
Oh, sorry, I jumped some important things, I beg your pardon. Very important. School Building Committee update, I, I think that this is going to need to be a, every meeting standing item on this part of the agenda, so.
Sure.
Mr. Tracy, since you're our representative?
Yes, School Building Committee is moving at light speed right now. I think I gave you an update last, a couple of weeks ago about it, but I've been, I've been elected chair of that committee, and Christine Minakuchi has been elected vice chair of that committee, and we, at our last meeting, we, we did hire, officially hire NV5 as our, I think we need to change the minutes on this before I forget, yeah, as our OPM, and we are using Dan and Kevin from KBA Architects as well. We had some meetings last week, we had a technical review committee, which is a, a group that the assistant town manager and Mr. Cofory from Community Development put together for us as a, as a committee, as well as the OPM and the architect to meet, to talk of the different boards, what kind of issues that they could expect, what kind of concerns they may have. So, that consisted, consisted of the planning board, Conservation Commission, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and just trying to, you know, talk through some potential issues that could be out there. It was, it was a great first meeting, we didn't see a lot of big issues coming forward with it, because obviously, we built that property, you know, several years ago, so there's not a lot of new issues. There's one issue that could, we think, arise with, with Mass DOT regarding the egress on 125, and we're working to schedule a meeting with them at this point. We're having bi-weekly coordination meetings between the School Building Committee, the OPM, the architect, and obviously, the superintendent and the business manager as well on that. And I think our next meeting, I'm sorry, the last aspect I wanted to mention, I think Superintendent Price maybe want to jump in on this, we're meeting with a subcommittee, we'll call it the Teachers Working Group of, there's probably seven or eight teachers from pre-K and K that are helping us, basically with the design of, of the building, because there's a lot of issues that, you know, we don't comprehend, or we wouldn't have really thoughts on, but we met with them last, last Wednesday for a couple hours, and that feedback was, you know, very instrumental, I think. Our expectation is next Wednesday, we're going to have another, another meeting with them, and our architect will come back with some, you know, different proposals for different, you know, the classrooms, the layout of the, the building and whatnot.
Well done. Very important. Any other questions or comments?
Our next meeting is going to be next, our next meeting is going to be next Wednesday at 5 o'clock right here, so, and those are obviously open to the public.
Obviously, those are all publicly posted, and, okay.
Absolutely.
Very good. Well, it's going to be a busy, busy committee, that's for sure. Thank you for doing that. We do have two sets of minutes to approve, I believe. Can we take them as a chunk, or do we have to do them individually?
Individually.
Okay. If I can find them. Oh, here we go. Someone would like to make a motion to accept the first minutes?
I move we approve the minutes from June 1, 2017.
Second. Mr., any comments or clarifications?
Comment. Just, just real, real quickly, in the minutes, it's described, the OPM is described as NV5, and it's NV5, so maybe Ms. Picard...
V as in Victor?
V as in Victor.
Okay.
Yes. So, we can just make that slight change, I think, everything else is fine by me, just that it's NV5, not NV5.
Which is on page two, is that right?
I thought it was my chair's, the former, the former chair's report.
There, thank you. Mm-hmm. Very good. So, do we have to have a new motion to accept them as amended?
So moved.
Second. New amendment by Mr. Tracy, second by Ms. Lynch, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No abstaining.
Another abstaining, okay. So, that's another four, zero, one. Great. So, now, it's on to the chair's report. My, I guess, first report would be that this is kind of a whirlwind, very busy week, and I think Dr. Price will be able to speak a lot to this, but what an incredible week for our seniors to graduate from North Andover High School with a lot of activities, a lot of special recognition through scholarships, and it was incredible to be part, part of some of those activities, so very, very important time. Are you going to comment on that separately?
Yes, I will.
Perfect. Anybody else like to comment? I, I can also say that I did my first SOS and saw Mr. McDevitt there, and that is quite a night, and I did talk to some now graduates afterward, and they said it was a blast, they loved it. We're very excited for the big reveal of what it looks like, so people have put that Okay.
Yes. So, we can just make that slight change. I think everything else is fine by me. Just that it's NV5, not NB5.
Which is on page two, is that right?
I thought it might chair's, the former chair's report.
There, thank you. Mm-hmm. Very good. So, do we have to have a new motion to accept them as amended?
So moved.
Second. New amendment by Mr. Triscy, second by Ms. Lynch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No abstaining.
Another abstaining. Okay. So, that's another 4-0-1. Great. So, now it's on to the chair's report. My, I guess, first report would be that this is kind of a whirlwind, very busy week. And I think Dr. Price will be able to speak a lot to this. But what an incredible week for our seniors to graduate from North Andover High School with a lot of activities, a lot of special recognition through scholarships. And it was incredible to be part of some of those activities. So, very, very important time. Are you going to comment on that separately?
Yes, I will.
Perfect. Anybody else like to comment? I can also say that I did my first SOS and saw Mr. McDevitt there. And that is quite a night. And I did talk to some now graduates afterward, and they said it was a blast. They loved it.
Yeah.
Were very excited for the big reveal of what it looks like. So, people have put that together over the years. They've done a tremendous job for our graduates. So, it was a very fun night.
Can you tell us about the Kittredge Playground event?
Sure. So, as everybody knows, we've been updating playgrounds over each kind of year with funding and then a lot of support from the local parents at the schools. And the, there was a very nice dedication and ribbon cutting at the Kittredge Playground last week, last Friday, it was the same day as graduation. And donors were appreciated and thanked, including Mr. Triscy's dad, who made a lot of donation to that project. And it was very well attended. It was very exciting. And it was, I loved actually learning what goes on at Kittredge with the hip hip hooray kind of cheers that.
Three cheers for Kittredge.
The three cheers for Kittredge is pretty cool. And so, it was a really special day. And the weather was perfect.
And of course, the highlight had to be.
Yes.
Prior to the ceremony, watching Superintendent Price and Assistant Superintendent Gilligan go down the slide.
I have a video.
I was saying, happily, that was documented, yes.
Yes.
And I didn't get stuck.
You didn't get stuck. We're still awaiting Mealy's time up there, but I think that's.
He was dressed too snappily to do that, yes.
You put a Wendy's lunch at the bottom.
I think that's all I have to comment on at the moment.
So, I have a few things.
Dr. Price, please.
So, first of all, you know, I documented in a letter out to the community our fantastic day last Friday, which started with the Kittredge dedication, which was highlighted in the middle by some Vespa touring around North Andover, following a bus of graduates who visited all five elementary schools. And we just had a blast, Mr. Gilligan. I think there's, I mean, midway through it, we both looked at each other and said, we have the best jobs in America, I think.
Yeah, incredibly just so proud of our kids. And it's just nice to see them, you know, having worked at all the different levels, how far they've come and how much they've achieved. But more important, just how nice they are and how nice they were to the elementary kids. I mean, it was an awesome day.
It was a great day. And then capped off by a beautiful night, I think, of graduation, two fantastic speeches by, three by our senior class president, our valedictorian, our soliditorian. Few comments I have now, it's my second year. It's so nice to have the kids read the names of each other. It's a tradition that not a lot of communities do. I think we take that for granted, but that demonstrates kids first. And not to have all these speakers up there. It's the kids, myself, and the principal. I think Deb Holman did an excellent job in her speech as her, for her one speech as North Andover High School Principal. It's fun to see you guys hand out the diplomas. I think it's a nice way to incorporate the school committee into the ceremony. I just thought it was a wonderful evening. So, just a great day. And I then sent out that email and got lots of nice emails back from the community. I mean, it was just one of those days you felt good about.
That was a really.
It was really wonderful. So, a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank David Triscy for his year as chair. You know, David, you really shepherded us through some really significant stuff this year. The contract, my contract, and, you know, just a whole bunch of ups and downs and around the bends. And I think you did so magnificently. So, I just want to thank you and I appreciate all your support this year.
Thank you. You made it very easy for me as well.
I am pleased, I think many of you know, we hired a new athletic director. I think it's the first female athletic director in the history of North Andover, Laura Habaker. I want to get that right. Very excited. She comes to us from Anna Maria College where she was the athletic director. She was a three-sport athlete at Clark, I believe.
Clarkson.
At Clarkson.
And head coach at both Clarkson and Elmira Women's Basketball.
Yeah. So, we're very excited to welcome her onboard.
How's it in New York?
New York, yeah.
Like Canada practically.
You'd know better than me.
We're very excited to welcome her onboard. And then I just wanted to let you know, Dr. Straight is not here tonight because she is involved in interviews for the sergeant principalship. She's chairing that committee, working with Carrie Wahlberg. So, that is why she's not here this evening. On a slightly not-so-great note, I just want to remind everyone that the Medicaid funding is in front of our federal government right now. Lots of work by superintendents to contact Washington, concerns that the funding that we just approved at town meeting is going to dry up with a block grant if the healthcare reform goes through. We're all contacting folks. It's just, it's an important time for our Medicaid funding. And, you know, that's a quarter of a million dollars, if not a half a million dollars for this district that we potentially could lose if that changes. So, just want to remind folks of our advocacy on that. Mr. Gilligan would like to talk a little bit about yesterday at Woodridge.
Yeah. I just wanted to let you know, we capped off our Woodridge North Andover Public Schools' Community Night last night. We've had tutors there all year after school in conjunction with the rec director. It used to be Mike Utley. Mike moved on to the youth center. And they have a new gentleman, Rob, who's been very gracious, letting us use the renovated rec room. So, we've had not only a tutor there every day after school, but a lot of our Title I teachers have given of their time to go up and help Julie Nally, Diane Peacock. So, last night, we had the end of the year celebration. I want to thank Terry Holland for all the pizza. We went through, oh, boy, I think it was 16 pizzas in less than 20 minutes. We had 37 students attend.
You personally, or?
No, I didn't get any. We had 37 students attend, and it was a true community partnership. We had Diane Peacock and Julie Nally, the Title I reading teachers from the Thompson and Atkinson. They brought over 50 books that were donated to them to continue to add to the expansive library we have over there for kids, bringing it to them. I want to thank Kathleen Keenan came out last night to talk a little bit about the summer challenge, superintendent challenge, all the different things, and, you know, the brag tags and some of the things they have going this summer. And then what I'm most proud about last night is we've been working hard with the Greater Lawrence Action Coalition or Council, one of the nonprofits in Lawrence with Maureen Pasick. We tried to get a mom, infant, you know, baby literacy program going, toddler, and it didn't really take off. But what we did find some interest in is from GLAC, a young man named Andreas. He works for them. He's going to be starting a dads group through Woodridge. And I think there's great potential for that next year. So, they were there. Lorraine Marks was terrific there last night. But we really had a blast. Really an end of the year celebration for all their hard work. And a bunch of the kids also got to take books home for the summer. So, back with them. It was really also nice to see, it wasn't just Atkinson, we invited Thompson. And we had a couple of new parents come out. So, parents who, we met a couple of families who had registered for kindergarten for Atkinson show up. One Thompson family came a little late, and there was no pizza left. So, I was a little sad about that. But it was nice to have folks out, and I just appreciated the cooperation with Woodridge. Despite the fact that Tracy's no longer there, there's some new folks willing to work with us. So, it was an awesome night and a great year.
Mr. Gilligan, will that, do you foresee that going on again next year?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
We'll continue with Woodridge. Royal Crest didn't quite work out the way we had hoped this year. It's a new management company, I believe. And, you know, there's some different things happening up there. I'm not sure what's going to take place.
Woodridge has been a great partner.
Right. That's fantastic.
But Woodridge has been a tremendous community partner.
How long has that been going on at Woodridge?
So, we've, we started it back up. First place I took Dr. Price, I said, you know, the first place person I want to introduce you to do is Selectman Tracy Watson.
July 1st, 2016.
10:00 AM. That was her first meeting, and we got in the car and we drove around.
That's great.
And we went to all the places. So, but prior to that, we had it when I was at Thompson for four years.
Right.
And then, if you recall, we dipped below the 5% Title I funding threshold from the federal government, and we lost over $200,000. So, as soon as we went back over the 5%, was that year, and it was really nice to get it back up and running.
Great.
The research is really clear. When you provide that extra time and support and you can bring the resources to kids, they make improvement academically, but they develop relationships that they might not normally have outside of the school day.
Fantastic.
And last, he does not know this, but can you just give everyone an update on the turf, Mr. Mealy?
I was just going to raise my hand.
Yeah, see? We're on the same page.
Yeah. So, last night, the Conservation Commission, thank you to them, did approve the project going forward. And so, in short period of time, you'll see the staging for both fields. And when I say both, it's actually three fields because the south field, the football field, and the practice field are usually considered one, but they're a double field. And then the north field within the track, all three surfaces are going to be resurfaced. That was a project that was approved this year at town meeting. So, for the public, that means those fields will not be available during the summer so that we have them ready for the start of school. So, those activities we normally have there will probably occur over at the middle school facility or somewhere else. But Scott Young and Rick Alante are aware of the situation and making other arrangements. But I wanted people to know that that's going forward, and they'll be out of commission. But we'll have some nice new safe surfaces to start the school year.
That's fantastic.
Can I just ask very quickly? How, how long has it been since we replaced those fields?
We never have. So, those are original.
So, those are.
Right. And the warranty, the warranty on a field is eight years with the life expectancy being around 10 or 12. So, we got our money's worth out of those fields.
Okay.
Right. And the reason you really need to change them is what happens over time, the fill that they use, you know, if you've ever been on them, during graduation, you see the little pellets. It's a mixture of pellets and sand, but it hardens. It becomes a much harder surface than it's supposed to be. And so, that's what the biggest improvement. Plus, the sun really degrades the fake grass, the plastic grass.
The fur.
So, as, you know, if it's been about 15 years, what's the projection for those to last?
So, now legitimately, it's 12 to 15.
Great.
Because they've gotten better.
Okay.
So, we wouldn't expect to have to change them for another 15 years or so.
That's great. Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody give the turf up here?
We should take it from there and use that here.
Does this involve actually digging up and regrading the whole area too, or is it just changing the surface?
So, what they do, the first thing they do is they vacuum out the fill and put it off to the side to be able to reuse. They'll supplement additional.
Okay.
To create a new mix. They cut the existing turf.
Yeah.
Into swaths, roll them up, take them out. Then they put in the, they laser grade.
Okay.
Put it back down and put the fill in.
And the practice field behind it, it's not the one where the baseball diamond is, it's the one that lies side by side with the football field.
Correct.
And so, nothing's happening with that baseball area?
No.
Okay. You weren't going to say something? Any other comments? Okay.
And the last thing I would say is very exciting partnership that Selectman DeColigero set up for us with a former North Andover graduate to actually do some pretty exciting gardening work on the facility that we're on right here. So, kind of blueberry bushes and raspberry bushes and some garden beds. Home Depot is going to be partnering with us. So, we probably won't see much until August or September, but if you start to see things happening out here, we're going to use this as an opportunity to really demonstrate what you can do with space rather than just grass and how it be very kind of environmentally thoughtful and demonstrate to the community that lawns aren't all that you can do for your yard. So, we're excited about it.
That was exciting.
How often do they cut the weeds here, by the way?
I would say you can see out there. Not too often.
Coming nice.
I keep comparing our grass to across the street.
I know. We didn't talk to the Assistant Town Manager about this.
Where there's no sprinkler system, and it still looks pretty good.
Yeah, I know.
There we go.
Thank you, Dr. Price. So, now we're going to move on to old business. The first item is the second reading of the policy for the wellness program.
So, in general, Ms. Mabley, I did not bring Ms. Barzak back.
That's fair, yeah.
To add the conversations, or just kind of votes on these.
Madam Chair, I'd move that the school committee approve as presented the revisions to policy ADF Wellness Program.
Second. Move by Mr. Triscy, second by Ms. McCarty. Any discussion?
I just have a clarifying question. If any changes at the federal level, we'll just come back.
Yeah.
Okay, at that time. Okay, I know, but mid-year, I mean.
Yes. If it does.
You never know.
You never know.
All right. I'm good.
Are we ready to make a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a 5-0. We also have the second reading of the appointment of the school physician who we met at our last meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that the committee vote to appoint Dr. Chan to serve as the school physician consultant for FY18 at a cost of $6,300.
Second. Motion by Mr. Triscy, second by Ms. McCarty. Any discussion?
He does a great job.
Yes, it was lovely to meet him last time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's 5-0 as well. Exciting. And now we have the Student Activity Accounts, second reading. Mr. Mealy sent us some clarifying information. And you have the other details here. You want to make a motion, or does anybody have any comments they want to start with?
I just, I really appreciated that little bit more information. It made it more than just a list.
Mm-hmm.
So, I appreciated that. And I would move that we accept the Student Activity Accounts as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McCarty, second by Mr. Triscy. Any other discussion? I just have a quick question. When do you decide, or how does it happen that you remove like the two, the older classes who long since graduated? When does that happen, or how does that happen?
Yeah, we actually, Lucy McCarthy, who has the overall responsibility of Student Activity Accounts, and Pat Roy, who has it at the high school, which is where most of our accounts are. We just met the other day, and we were talking about that, of having the annual meeting with the treasurer of each class so that we can determine what choice they're going to make and they make arrangements if they're going to take the money, close out the account, which has to happen.
Right.
They might take it and establish their own account that they can use for future reunions or whatever it might be. And some choose to leave it for the incoming freshman class. So, we're putting in place the process, and we'll review that with the class treasurers and class officers going forward.
And so, then probably next year, several of these will have.
Exactly.
Dissolved.
They will. Yep.
Can I ask you a quick question? So, number 149.
Yeah, it's supposed to be 2020. Is that the one?
All right. Yep.
Ms. McCarty had pointed that out to me, yes.
I didn't know if they gifted it to the class of 2020.
No, it's supposed to be 2020.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And this is a bigger document to have read. The second reading of the student handbook, and if you recall, a lot of changes were made by Attorney Egan to consolidate so that we have a consistent document for all of our schools to use for student handbooks. And then from there, schools can add any of their special things themselves.
I would like to thank Ms. McCard. She did a editor's job on this and sent a whole bunch of edits to Ms. Egan today, which she has incorporated. So I would like to thank you for taking the time to read through it and.
I won't just say my pleasure, but.
Yes. But I do think your efforts should be acknowledged by the committee and Suzanne wanted me to thank you. I mean, you know, she was very appreciative.
Good, I'm glad it was helpful.
And there's a lot, that's a lot of work to pull it together by yourself, so that's great that you were able to do that, Ms. McCard.
Thank you. Any other comments? Entertain a motion for this one?
I will move, so let me make sure I have the wording right. I move that the committee approves as presented the core policies section of the student handbooks.
Second. Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. McCard. Ms. Lynch, any discussion? My one question is, I know that at the high school, they are piloting a cellphone policy. Do you foresee that, once it's finalized, being added to this general one, or would that stay specific to the high school?
Probably stays specific to the high school.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
None.
All those in favor of accepting?
Aye.
Aye. Moving. Five-oh.
I'd just like to say this is a significant change for our community to have a single handbook, and I think it's a really good change. I want to thank you for your support.
As a parent, I am grateful that it's been done and it will make things a lot easier to have consistency across schools and across grades as you grow up.
This is a direct example of why having a town attorney has been beneficial to us, because this is something that would have been a struggle to have some, to pay someone to do.
Right.
And I think Ms. Egan has done an excellent job doing this.
Very good point. So we now have the superintendent evaluation, which I somehow put away in my bag.
Here you go.
Do you have the agenda, Mr. Mealy?
Go back to it?
Yeah. I just think that the information you guys have in the charts is not, you know, if that's helpful.
Do you just want me to stay on the agenda?
Yeah, if people want to see, reference the charts, they can.
So annually, we do a public review of Dr. Price. I can't honestly remember how we did this last year, so I wouldn't mind some help from people.
Sure. So anyways, I was happy to do my evaluation and I was happy to see everyone else do their evaluation of Dr. Price. I know Ms. McCard, Ms. Lynch had only served here for a few months, but as I mentioned in previous meetings, I think their experience with her going back to their time on the search committee that brought her here gave them a perspective that was very helpful in doing the evaluation. Just real quickly, because I think, you know, part of this will be on the website as well.
The pie charts?
The pie charts will be on the website, right? I think after.
Yes, they're up now already.
They're up now already.
Mm-hmm.
So just, I'll just, you know, summarize real quickly for those listening at home. There were four goals that we had set out at the beginning of the year, back last July, August. And the first one was to decrease class size with a specific focus on elementary class sizes in order to better meet the needs of all students. Three of us said she made significant progress towards that. One said she met it and one said she exceeded it. And I think, you know, reading through the comments on it, which are probably more, you know, indicative than just a single bullet, was that we were making great progress. You know, I think we are well on our way to decreasing class size in this district with the building of new kindergarten, as well as adding new teachers that I think we're going to be doing over the next couple of years or so. Everyone felt very, very confident with that one. The next goal was to ensure that our schools have sufficient access to technology and to provide our faculty up-to-date instructional materials. Three out of five said we had, that Dr. Price had met that and the other two said we had made significant progress towards that. The third goal was to develop a comprehensive human resources model to support staff recruitment, advanced supervision, advancement supervision and valuation. And again, very high marks here. Forty percent exceeded, forty percent met, and one made significant progress towards. I think in the comments, you could see that, you know, the hiring of Ms. Wahlberg has done, she's done great work for the district and people feel very confident with her in that role. Goal number four was implementing targeted innovative learning, learner-centered experiences that allow students to apply their knowledge to authentic situations with a focus on civic engagement, social justice, and empowering global leaders. Four to five said she met that and one said she exceeded that. So I think overall, you know, the marks were very, very high. The comments, especially you, Madam Chair, were very significant and illustrative of Dr. Price's involvement here. I mean, I know we've talked about this and I hate to be redundant, but I think everyone feels very, very comfortable, confident, and thrilled that Dr. Price is leading the schools on all her, on all the goals that we had set out for her at the beginning of the year, but that she had set out for ourselves and we signed on to. Decreasing class size, the technology, you know, I know Ms. Maybley mentioned the Medicaid revolving account, the work that she and I know Assistant Superintendent Gilligan put into that was phenomenal. I really, I'm struggling to find one bad word in here, and I guess I'm not going to find one. No, but I mean, everything, everything, everything across the board and just the overall performance that she had, you know, exemplary was, was the word over and over again that was used. So I know myself, and I was going to make these comments during my, at the close, but I'll just say as, as chair for the last year, serving with Dr. Price has been just an incredible experience, really has. Makes my job, and I'm sure it's going to make your job a lot easier, knowing that you have great leadership at the top of the school system. We don't see it day in and day out, but believe me, you're going to find, when you're in the schools, you're going to hear it from the teachers, the parents of her involvement, her engagement. You know, reflecting on my twenty years of being an elected official in the town, the camaraderie and working relationship with the town manager is unprecedented. We are very fortunate to have, you know, Andrew Mailer and Jen Price leading this town. And I think, you know, in informal conversations with members of the board of Selectman, I think they feel the same way towards you, that they've never had that kind of a relationship with superintendent before. You know, in many communities, there's this huge divide between town and school, school and town, and it's just not occurring right now here. And it just, it's just something special to be part of. So I think the evaluation speaks for itself, and again, it'll be on the website, but I'm very happy that everyone felt pretty much the same way on this, on this issue and felt the same way about Jen. So I know we signed a new contract just a few weeks ago and I'm very happy we have you here for another five years.
Thank you.
Ms. McCard, would you like to make any comments?
I don't think I do.
Okay. Ms. Lynch?
I actually enjoyed this process. I was a little intimidated at first, but once I talked to you and talked to you, Ms. Maybley, I felt much more comfortable and just it was, it was fun for me to express what I've been feeling throughout the year and in a positive way.
Thank you. Mr. McDevitt?
I'm going to echo, I think, a lot of what Mrs. Terese said, and there's nothing that is in here that I think we already haven't had conversations about Dr. Price. But, you know, the thing that I always think about with this, and I think I wrote this here as well, is, you know, the first year was such an entry plan and trying to kind of understand the community and assimilate yourself. And I think you did an unbelievably fantastic job, and I feel like this was such a year of foundation and kind of putting some things in place, kind of making your stamp on North Andover. And, you know, when we go back and we look at things for class size, for example, I mean, I think I put that there was, if I remember correctly, I put that you had met it, and I think other people had said, you know, you made the significant progress. And I look at that because of all of the time that I know that you put into meeting with members of the community. I mean, I don't, I can't imagine how many nights it was, but it must have been a dozen nights. That, you know, you, you spent here in North Andover just meeting with every piece of this community that you could and the time with Mr. Mailer in order to be prepared for all of that. And while the building isn't necessarily here yet, you know, it's been approved by town budget, you know, we're taking the steps forward. So I just feel like with so many pieces here and knowing that you're here for, you know, the next couple of years, that this has just been that foundation piece. And so I knew at the, what was it, not the Busy Bee Cafe, where do we meet in Newton?
Oh, the local.
The local?
Yeah.
No, that wasn't the name of it.
The Newland?
She should know.
The restaurant, right?
Where we signed our contract?
No, we, well, sort of, I guess. Where we agreed to it, I guess.
Where we agreed to terms of my contract.
Agreed to the general terms.
It was the local.
The local, okay. I mean, I knew then that we had made the right decision.
We did not sign the right.
And I just continue to think, you know, as I hear from members of the community, that we're moving in the right direction. And again, thank you for your leadership.
I would like to say that two big words that come to mind for me about you are action and creativity. So you've been here two years, barely, not even yet, and you've made a lot of changes very quickly where people, I feel, have been looking for change, but no one's actually, they said it would take too long, it's not possible, we don't have the money, whatever, but you found creative ways to put foreign languages back in school, to come up with a solution for class size that's not going to cost, you know, the town tons of money, but is going to make an instant impact. And, but my favorite thing I think that you did this year was, yes, we have the class size plan with the kindergarten, but you came up with something for next year with your principals to reduce some class sizes in some pretty tough spots, really without any, doing anything different, right? You didn't do anything differently, but you rearranged things and found a way to make it work with your colleagues. And to me, that shows both the creativity and the action that you've taken. You're not waiting till later till we have a building to make a solution. You made an interim solution. And I'm grateful for that. But I also makes me, I added here some other places I'd like you to look for, those types of creativity, because I think you can, because you've proven you can a couple of times. Not that it's possible, but at least looking at it, I know that if you've looked at it and you come back and say, you know, we just can't do it that way, that'll be good for me, because I know that you'll have tried and you're, you're going to find a way to do whatever you can to make a difference for our kids. So thank you for that. Any other comments? Would you like to comment?
I just really appreciated the time that you all put into the comments, especially that you all gave me. You know, I think it's always really tricky to be evaluated on television in front of everyone. So, you know, I really appreciated that you took the time to kind of give me some feedback. The level of specificity that you provided was really impressive, which just demonstrates to me that we're in this together. And I felt that all along. I felt this year that we were at meetings together, we were marching together, we adopted the same goals, right? And I think, you know, really, you don't do any of this work if it's not together. And it's together with all of you. I mean, the number of meetings you guys came to about the class size issues, the, going to the senior center, going to the, to the library, you know, going out to Smolak Farms. I mean, you all were with me and I just really, really appreciate that. And I think that together is something you alluded to, is I have such a great group of people I get to work with every day, from the two gentlemen here and Dr. Straight, but also the entire central office team and all the principals. I mean, you don't make a creative solution if you don't have fantastic people who are willing to think outside the box. So, you know, it was really interesting, someone said to me, I can't remember who it was, but, you know, this weekend, I was just talking about my time here and what we've been able to do, and someone turned to me and said, you know, you really chose the right community to go work in. And I think, I said absolutely, and I think that's a direct result of we've identified issues, you gave me time to do an entry plan. Some, some, some school committees won't give superintendents the time to really identify the issues. They want action the moment you show up. It took me six months to identify the issues and the school committee stayed with me. And then we've created a plan and we've shared that plan. I think when we adopted the same goals this fall, I was really optimistic about the fact that we were all in this together. And it just, for me, you know, they say the superintendency can feel very lonely, and I have to say, I just don't feel lonely at all. I feel really supported by all sorts of people, both the school committee and the people I have the privilege to work with and, and by the town. I think this is a, I echo your comments, Mr. Terese, and the only reason our relationships work is if it works on both sides. And we have a town that's really willing to kind of roll up its sleeves to see what we can do to provide a better educational experience for our kids. And it's, it's wonderful to be working collaboratively rather than fighting over that. So it's been a great year. I look forward to next year and more and exciting things to come.
Very exciting.
And I look forward to looking back at our strategic plan and figuring out what's, what's next year look like for us. You know, a few previews for me, as I think we have a lot of work to do around the social emotional components and the student services component, really thinking about all kids and how we're supporting them, really pushing ourselves to think about what is our plan for the middle school. I think that's really something we're going to, we're going to need to address as a group. And really thinking about in terms of human resources, now that we've got the systems and structures in place, how do we hire and retain a staff that better reflects the student body that we have the privilege to educate?
So that wasn't too terrible, right?
It was great. And I wish for anyone watching on television to have their evaluation.
That's right.
On in public. We've got them open to you all.
Now, do we have to actually vote on our evaluation? I can't imagine, because we've just given it. Yeah, okay, great.
I don't remember voting in the past.
No, I didn't, I didn't remember last year either, so.
We may have just taken a vote as a sign of continued support.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, but I don't remember.
Feel free to make a motion, Mr. McDevitt.
So I will move that we accept Dr. Price's evaluation.
Second.
Any other discussion? So with the motion by Mr. McDevitt and the second by Mr. Terese, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well done, Dr. Price.
Thank you. Thank you guys for doing it.
And on to some new business.
Sent me enough texts.
Actually, can I, actually, Mr. McDevitt wasn't here, but I'm sure he knows about it. So we talked a little bit about the NAEC accreditation process last meeting with Judy You're recommending that we discontinue, right?
Yeah, so you know, the last time we talked about this, whether or not you guys had to make an official vote. So we looked back, Bev, Ms. Agari looked through all the minutes. It was never officially voted that we participated in it. It was just that we approved the kindergarten grant and part of the requirements were that we did that, although as Ms. Rogers reported, many organizations, many schools did not actually follow through. You know, I think Ms. Rogers made a really good, good demonstration of why now that the state has additional standards in place, the cost of this accreditation, our thought is to discontinue, given that the kindergarten grant is no longer reliant, because there is no kindergarten grant. It doesn't impact us negatively in any way and actually, we believe, frees our kindergarten teachers up from some kind of cumbersome paperwork burdens. And over the next few years, as we open up the new kindergarten space attached to the ECC, I think we need the time to focus our kindergarten teachers on that transition. So my, my recommendation, and I, I think it would be helpful to have your support, is to discontinue that accreditation process, understanding that our schools are currently accredited, so we're not doing it for any of that reason. It's just that it just doesn't seem to be worth the bang for the buck.
And it's not as if you're going to then not take those criteria you were measuring and not do them anymore.
Right. And that's because the state has now kind of basically taken the process and made it a state process, which is free and doesn't cost any money.
Right. And so we're still checking up on all those things we would through that process anyway.
Absolutely.
So we're not risking any kind of changes that way.
Correct.
So I guess I'll make a motion that we support Dr. Price's decision to discontinue the NAEC accreditation process.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Say no.
No. And so that is a four-one. Next new business is we have a first reading on an overnight trip to the Model UN.
So this is a trip that Mr. Mayett takes every year. This upcoming year, it is in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. It's the Ivy League Model UN Conference hosted at the University of Pennsylvania. They're going to miss two days of school, and you can see that the information here is that they're going to be taking a chartered bus and making sure that that meets our approval of a bus that is acceptable for us. And this is not until next January.
No Fu Wang bus?
No.
No?
We've gotten pretty tight on the process. They have to put in a bus that is approved by us and Lucy has to approve it.
So this is obviously the first reading of this. Is there anything, because we will not meet again until much later in the summer, but is there any requirement?
I have not been, I have not been told that this is one we have to rush through. He's just getting ahead of the game, which is great.
I just want to make sure there wasn't like an early bird registration or any of that. Okay.
And do you have any idea how do students, anybody who applies, get accepted, or if you had forty kids, what would happen, or is it based on a club?
But I have no idea, but I can come back and tell you that.
Okay, I'd just be curious. Because it's a pretty fantastic opportunity. Just be curious to see who tends to go on that, if it's from a club or?
It does say it's a club.
It does, yeah.
It's been a club for a long time.
Okay.
But I don't know if.
I don't know if kids, once they hear about it, do they join the club in September and then now you're up to more kids or whatever.
Yeah, but I don't know if you have to like try out for it, but I think it is a club. I mean, definitely a club, I just don't know if all the members of the club get to go.
How it goes, that's exactly right.
Yep.
Yep.
Very cool trip. Any other questions? We'll see that again, like Mr. McDevitt said sometime at the end of the summer.
TBD.
That's right. And then, Dr. Price, if you can, I believe you're gonna lead us on this next discussion?
Yeah, so we discussed this in executive session, but I'm asking you guys to, just a reminder for those out there, the way that it works in Massachusetts is that the superintendent hires the non-aligned, so that's mostly administrators within a district, and the school committee has to approve the terms and conditions of those contracts. So what I'm asking for at this point is for you to approve 2% in the aggregate increase in administrative contracts, which is in line with what we just approved with teachers, specifically, the total increase would not exceed $60,390, which is 2% of the contracts, and that no individual would get more than a 5% raise, and giving me the discretion to disperse those funds appropriately among the various administrators who work in North Andover.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion that the committee approve an amount to be paid in salary increases from the FY18 budget totaling approximately 2% in the aggregate, not to exceed 5%, for any one person calculated as if such increases will occur on July 1st, 2017. The total increases will not exceed $60,390.73 in the aggregate previously budgeted as part of the FY18 budget process, to be divided among the 33 principals and other district-wide employees as determined by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Teresi. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lynch, any other discussion or questions?
So I have a question, since this is a first reading, do we need to suspend the bylaws?
Ah, good point. Yep. 'Cause we do need to do this now, because we cannot wait till the end of the summer to do this.
I move that we suspend the bylaws to have two readings of this motion.
And vote on it tonight, right? Oh, it goes, okay.
So I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
So we're voting on whether or not we're suspending the bylaws.
Right, so do we have to do a roll call, vote for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Teresi?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Maylie votes yes, so we are suspending the rules, so now we can have a motion again about this piece. Do you have to read it again?
I don't think you have to read it.
I think the chairs would just go back to the original motion.
Okay, so we're gonna take back the nicely read motion by Mr. Teresi.
When I can take it back, we're gonna vote on it, right?
That was seconded by Ms. Lynch, right?
I just wanna comment on that, if I may, Ms. Madam Chair, that I think the spreadsheet that the superintendent has provided us is very well done, it's very easy to comprehend. I know my first year on the committee, this wasn't as clear, and the last two years, she's done a great job, I'm sure with the able assistance of her assistant superintendent, Mr. Mealy, in getting all this information from us, there's much more consistency, it's very clear to us, you know, who's getting paid what, and so I think it's a very good way of presenting the information to us.
Any other comments? So do we have to roll call this as well?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Teresi?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
And Ms. Maylie votes yes. Very good, thank you for putting that together, that was great, and for sticking with the required amount of money.
Even more board.
It's my one time a year I get to play in Excel, so it makes me very happy.
That's fun.
That's good, that's sort of pathetic, I know.
Any public comment? Seeing none, aye.
Come on down.
I do think, we do have one scheduling issue that I think we need to talk about is time.
Okay, oh, that's right, forgot to put this here, yes. Thank you.
I, I, I know it's a bit of a, but wondering if we can look at whether or not we would get together, you know, for me, our time together, I think, would be mostly about kind of what we just talked about, was the, what's our next phase of the strategic plan? I meet with my, there's two options, in my opinion, there's not, unless there's some pressing business and we needed to do something, at this point, I don't see any over the summer, that doesn't mean something couldn't happen, right? So we could call a meeting with appropriate notice if something came up. I meet with my leadership team to really look at the strategic plan August 15th, 16th, and 17th. Last year, we allowed, I met with them, and then we had our retreat, which was actually very helpful, because kind of the leadership team had come forward with a plan, and then it gave you guys an opportunity to react to that plan before I rolled it out to the teachers. I thought that was a good sequencing, rather than us doing it and waiting for the leadership team. If you remember, I felt that that worked last year, is that, that's how we did it last year.
Yeah, I mean, it was really practical, because other years, we've rolled out a plan without developing it with the team, and it's a little out of sync, so this really flows much better.
So the one question is, could we do it sometime the week of August 20th, that 21st week, or the 17th in the evening, I suppose, or a retreat, or, because the teachers come back on the 29th, if that is not feasible, then we could find a time prior to the leadership team meeting. But the leadership team is gonna kind of take off in a few quick weeks, and not really reconvene the building-based leadership team, we're gonna be working all summer.
So you're looking for like another three or four hour meeting like last time?
Yeah, and it would be.
Which was in July last time.
Yeah.
Right, we did one in July.
And then we did another.
And then we did one in August, so the question is, we could do two, or we can just do one in August, it's really up to you.
I'm fine in August, I'm on vacation that week of the 15th, 16th, 17th, so I prefer the following week. Classes start the following week, so it would have to be around like.
The week of the 21st is what we're looking at, are people around that week?
I am that week.
I think I am, I think earlier in the week is better.
So we're talking about week of the 21st?
I start that Monday, so I teach on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Okay, so we'd be looking at possibly Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
I think Thursday, Friday, I cannot do.
So we're looking at the 22nd?
August 22nd.
Does that work for you, Mr. Teresi?
If we're gonna do like eight to 12, like last time?
Yeah.
It's a long way off, but I'm sure, I'll pump it in.
Does that work for you?
Yeah. Was there any, just to ask the question, was there any benefit to our having talked before you worked with your leadership team, or you?
It really is up to you, I mean, we could definitely do a meeting in July. I think last year, we had got the bones of our strategic plan. What we would be doing is what I'm gonna do with my leadership team, is reacting to the strategic plan.
So that all is kind of already in place?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was really kind of us getting the big, but if we feel like we need to schedule a meeting in July, too, I just.
That could be TBD, I guess.
Right, yeah, I feel fine with August 22nd, I just wanted to put out there based on last time, so.
And with four hours, I mean, I think we could really spend some significant time.
So if we can put down August 22nd, we did from?
Eight to 12.
Eight to 12, before, yep.
Does that work for you, Ms. Teresi?
Here at this.
Bless you.
And we'll do it as a retreat, so we'll do all that we need to do to have permission to not have a teleconference.
Not a teleconference.
Right, right.
But that would really allow us to report on the Institute and kind of.
That's great.
And get, and that gives us a week to adapt our message for the teachers who come back the following week, so.
Right, okay.
Good, sure we're on the same page.
That's good, and I'm sure we can discuss this, you know, in other ways over the summer, but it'd be great if we came to that meeting with any conflicts we have from the September to December calendar, so that we don't wait till September to do that, we take care of that.
Yep, I'll have Ms. Agari work on that.
Okay.
I'm sure you guys will be talking prior to that.
Yes, but I mean, just, you know. Okay, great.
And, you know, as, without this, with this gap in meeting if there's something that's coming up, we're gonna, we made it to meet if there's an issue.
Sounds good, all right. Anything else? Any other comments from anyone? Ms. Lynch?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Just a couple of quick things, I mean, one, obviously, we have graduation last Friday night, which is unbelievable night, again, you know, the SOS party, the students were unbelievable, so many vendors came up and just said like, I'm just incredibly impressed with these students, and they were fantastic, I've already signed up for next year, I want in, it's a great, great night. And then the last thing, I mean, we're really wrapping up the end of the school year, so I wish everyone a great end of the school year, and a happy, healthy summer, where we keep reading and working on our math facts and all of that fun stuff, and I do encourage you all to the Wizard of Oz play on Wednesday night, I believe it is 6:00 PM, although it could be 7:00, I think it's 6:00, at the high school, and it's across a number of elementary schools, and it is just a great, great afternoon, or evening show, so.
That's great. Mr. Teresi?
Agreed, graduation last week was fantastic, I had some first time people that went to it just say how well-run it is, it is perfectly timed, it's great that the students introduced the kids, the speeches weren't too long, you know, the weather was beautiful, but I also wanna acknowledge that I was happy to go to the Kittredge kindergarten graduation yesterday, it was inside, but it was well-done, and I'm happy to say my son is matriculating to the first grade, so that was big. But I just wanna say that, you know, as I wrap up my year as Chair, I wanna thank everyone for your help and support, I also wanna thank, you know, former school club member Stanley for supporting me last year to become the Chair, it was a great, a great experience for me personally, and again, already, I was talking about earlier, I had a moment last night, I was at an event, and I was talking to John Lyons, a former school club member from the 90s, and we talked about some of the battles, you know, he's been a friend for a long time, but I really remember, I was on the Board of Selectmen at the time, and we reminisced about this in a good way last night, about him actually threatening me over a vote or two, but there was a lot more disagreement amongst the school committee and the Selectmen, the FinCon back then, and I, again, I just don't think we should take it for granted, I, and I mentioned this to Dr. Price before, but, you know, I work, my business is, I deal with a lot of municipalities, and I've, I've seen towns just, you know, tear each other apart, and this distrust and uncivility, it's just, it's something that we're not used to in North Andover right now, and I don't wanna take it for granted. I wanna really thank, again, I think it really comes down to our, the two pillars, you know, Jen and Andrew Mailer, for bringing people together, and the trust issue, people believe the numbers, and that was always a big thing, you know, I've seen in the town, we don't believe the numbers, and there's great trust between the town manager and the superintendent that is not common, I think, in a lot of towns, so we shouldn't take it for granted, I think we should appreciate the time we're in, as someone who's seen, you know, people in this town rip each other apart, I feel very fortunate to be serving at this time, so, and again, I wanna thank everyone for your support over the last year as being Chair, so thank you.
Ms. Picard, any comments?
So it's just been a real great spring, we've gotten a lot of work done, and I'm really, really pleased that I've been able to serve, you know, in this position, and having just had a conversation about summer calendars, winding down this year, Mr. Gilligan knows exactly what I'm gonna say, which is, I would just encourage the principals and the folks that are scheduling school things for next year, as we're winding down, we're winding up, to get those calendar items right there on the public calendar, so we don't have conflicts between schools and between levels, and making it difficult for parents to get places. I know that we've made a lot of progress on that, and I know we will continue to do that, but it's, it's hard to be forethoughtful right now, and, you know, you bringing it up about us and our schedule, we really need to make sure that we do that in the schools, and I appreciate that you guys are doing that, but just a reminder always.
A few things, so actually, that came up in the PTO president's meeting this morning that I might wanna mention, that Dr. Price chefed up some pancakes for all the PTO presidents, and most of them outgoing, some new members were there this morning, and we did talk about ways to somehow improve the community calendar, so that there aren't overlaps, particularly in the spring, with the youth center auction, the Y auction, the, you know.
The Flag Night.
All the different, there were so many things that people wanted to go to them